I didn't have anyone for the pledge, so pick some.
I'd like to call the City of LaPorte Common Council Meeting to order, August 18th, 2025. It is about 6:04 PM. We will begin with the Pledge of Allegiance. Councilman Buchanan.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic from which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Roll call. Clerk Treasurer Parthen.
Councilman Frankie.
Here.
Councilwoman Huffman is absent. Councilwoman Ficus.
Present.
Councilman Galloway.
Here.
Councilwoman Kaneshny.
Present.
Councilman Buchanan.
Here.
And Councilwoman West is absent, so we have five present, two absent.
Approval of minutes for August 4th, 2025. Do I have a motion?
I would like to make a motion to approve the minutes as presented.
Second.
Motion and second. Discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. Petitions and comments of citizens. I do have several cards here. Please remember if you have one card or three, it's three minutes total. And I know we have an individual here with three cards, but that will be three minutes total. We'll begin tonight. Paul Skiat, if you would, state your name and address for the record with your topic.
Good evening. My name is Paul Skiat. I live at 3196 North Briar Leaf Court. My topic is related to number eight on the agenda tonight. I apologize if I'm a little tardy with being in the information flow, but what I was hoping, Mayor, was if we could just address and maybe have kind of a little bit of sidebar. I was fortunate enough to be here when the atrium topic, the atrium on 39 North, was discussed. And I didn't hear anything about economic development dollars going in that direction. And I don't know, like I say, if I missed it, or, but I would be interested in knowing if there's going to be any of those types of dollars invested at the atrium as well.
Thank you. Charity. What an amazing mural. Thank you so much, by the way.
I'm so excited. So as of nine o'clock last night, the mural is officially completed. So I would like to invite all of you, cordially invite all of you, to the ribbon cutting ceremony, which is Friday at noon at the hotspot. We are doing a naming contest, so you can DM us on Facebook to name the mural, and then we have The Frog Needs a Name as well. So message us on Facebook, send them to charity@hotspotcafe.net, email it. The winner of the mural naming contest will receive a signed framed picture of the print of the mural, $100 in gift certificates from local businesses, and a one-year membership to the LeBeznik Center. Oh, and we got a couple of tickets to the concert on Saturday. The Nail, I don't know who he is, the country singer, Nail, something Nail. So anyway, we got, it's quite a little package there. The first 50 people who arrive will also receive, it's a smaller signed print of the mural, and then we're also giving away other gift certificates as well of light finger food. So come on, check it out, take your picture by the mural, and just have fun. Oh, Hilltop Bar will be there as well, doing mimosas, stuff like that, some fun stuff with iced tea. So come check us out. We'll see you then.
I know several votes came into the office with the name of Ogle for the frog. So you're already ahead. Dean White.
Yes, Dean White, 3066 North Highway 35. I'm here to address a few items. One is to please remind the city to try to eliminate the sign that the state highway has up there for over three months on the 700 block of Lincoln Way.
I'm sorry, did you say remove or illuminate?
Well, no, it's been there without any work in that area for three months now, and I've been told that the city is not in a hurry to move it, and they don't know why.
You were told that by the state highway?
No, I was told that by some city officials. I'd have to recollect later. I've got three minutes.
Okay.
Okay, so, but I brought it up before the council once before, if you can go back a month ago. Okay, and the other issue is I buy properties for rental income for my future, and recently I bought one at 508 Maple Street. It was built in 1892, and it is a two-story brick two-flat, and it has a carriage house in the back, a brick carriage house with a single apartment in the back. And it has a leaded glass, beautiful, I gave you pictures of the beautiful leaded glass and stained glass windows. However, it has a raised concrete curb that was built for horse and carriage accessibility, so they could step up into the horse and carriage. And it has deteriorated profusely, and I've given you pictures of some different directions of that as well. And you'll see that there is remnants of a hitching post that is in that embankment. And I might point out that at my other property on Monroe Street, at the entrance of my vacation rental, the Interlude Suite, I have two hitching posts that was handed down in my family, the white family. And the white families were among the early settlers of Indiana, contributing to the state's growth and development in the late 18th and 19th centuries. So I just wanted to point out there's that significance there. So I'm asking if the city, I mean, it's on their easement, would be able to just remove that concrete. There is a curb in front of that that is in decent condition. Sorry, that was my time.
Yeah, but go ahead, finish the third one.
The third one, okay, the third one is, in purchasing this building down in the basement, I found an original building permit that was, it was not a piece of paper, it was flat, it had wrinkles to it, so I had it framed, and I want to donate it to the city building department. It's spaced, the glass is spaced because of the irregularity in the glass.
Thank you. Craig Phillips, I think you'll like that. Dean, thank you. Very cool. And this was at 508 Maple or at, no kidding?
Dean, on this last picture, is that the carriage house?
Oh, yes.
The last.
Well, the carriage house is behind that house. It's another separate building. This was the original residents in 1892. Oh, I'm sorry, that picture there, that's the neighbor next door. And that garbage has been there for over a month, while I even own the property, the building vacant. I was told that it had been condemned at one time, and it's owned by Chris Holdings. He's got two other buildings on that block. And so I'm trying to get, I'm probably putting close to $300,000 into this structure, and I'd like to see more improvement in that block. And maybe with code enforcement, or if.
On Maple?
On Maple.
Well, I can tell you, in fact, as late as today, you're seeing, you had, there was a meeting on a landlord on Maple that's, again, slum lords, that have allowed people to live unsafe. It's embarrassing.
Well, appreciate.
So we agree with you.
Helping us clean up that area and improve. That'll bring better tenants into my place as well.
Thank you. Rick Ogle.
I have to say, you guys have taken care of.
Thanks, Rick.
And we agree with you.
Hundred percent.
Any comments?
Nope, nothing.
On social media? Standing Committee reports. Council President Frankie.
Redevelopment Commission meets next Wednesday, the 27th, 5:15 here in council chambers. That's all I have.
Councilwoman Ficus.
Park Board meets this Wednesday, 4:00 PM at the park office, and then due to the Labor Day Holiday, Traffic Commission will be meeting one week later than normal, September 9th, Tuesday, 5:00 PM at the police station.
Councilman Galloway.
There we go. Mayor's Veterans Committee met Monday on the 11th, and let's see, 9:15 to 9:10:15 will be coffee and donuts. It'll be our 38th Annual Veterans Program, and lunch will be 12:00 to 3:00 at the VFW. And all veterans are free with their spouses, everybody else has to pay, and we're still working over all the, everything else. And on the 12th, we talked to the police department, the Police Merit Commission, and they're starting up the reserve program again, and they're going to have a Citizens Police Academy, and they've applied for grants. They would like our backing on their grants, and vehicles will start going through enterprise. And the field day was, I think, the 16th. And at Kestling, there was LaPorte, Michigan City, and the county. They all worked with children, getting, so they would interact more with the kids, and they all had certain amount of kids, they took them through everything. And right now, the manpower is full, for now anyway, and they've got a thing going up for towing lease fees. Right now, that's all I have.
Thank you. Councilman Buchanan.
The Historic Preservation Commission meets tomorrow, August 19th, at 5:30 here in council chambers.
Councilwoman Kaneshny.
Nothing to report, Your Honor.
Before we go into the ordinances, I don't know if, Bert Cook, Economic Development Director, if you don't mind sharing atrium, just to address not only from the council perspective, but also to Mr. Skiwat's question regarding atrium housing.
Yeah, thank you, Mayor Bert Cook, Executive Director of the LaPorte Economic Advancement Partnership. So Paul and I had a chance to talk this morning, we've talked previously as well, kind of use the analogy, we're going to present a project a little bit later this evening in Beechwood Lakes. We've been working on that project about three years at this point, but really, we're going on about 14 months in, really in earnest, since the bid was received for that project. And as I say to you often, you know, we've got a lot of steps in the process in order to get towards that finish line. The project that Paul referenced, which we're calling atrium, which is 39 North, you've now, you've now seen it, and we've had some discussion elsewhere as well at the city. That's in what I would consider step two of a much longer process, and so we're about two months into that deal. I would expect to have the conversations that Paul is referencing later, when, once we realize we have a real project. The last thing we want to do is, you know, spend a lot of time and a lot of effort on a project that maybe won't go anywhere right from the start. And so to answer the question, simply, no, those conversations have not occurred yet, but we fully anticipate they will occur over the longer course of the project.
Questions regarding atrium? Thank you.
Thanks.
Council President Frankie, introduction of an ordinance.
Your Honor, I move to read an ordinance for the first time in its entirety. However, I will be omitting Section 1, Letter A, and would also move to strike that prior to our second reading.
Second.
Motion and a second. Discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Councilman Frankie.
An ordinance establishing a tow release services fee and create a police equipment non-reverting fund, Fund Number 5509, whereas the City Council for the City of LaPorte, Indiana, has received a recommendation by the LaPorte Police Department that a tow release services fee should be established, and now therefore be it, and it is hereby ordained by the Common Council of the City of LaPorte, Indiana, that Section 1 tow releases services fee be a fee in the sum of $250 for offense-related tow release services. Offenses related to toes include, but are not limited to, arrest involvement, vehicles used in the commission of a crime, traffic violations, no or improper insurance, and improper licensing or registration. See a fee in the sum of $1,000 for vehicle pursuit violent crime related to tow services. Vehicle pursuit-related toes include, but are not limited to, vehicles which are used to flee from a law enforcement officer after the officer has by visible or audible means, including operation of the law enforcement officer's siren or emergency lights, identified himself or herself, and ordered the person to stop. Violent crime-related toes include, but are not limited to, vehicles used in the commission or to commit murder, non-negligent manslaughter, aggravated assault, drive-by shooting, rape, robbery, gang violence, or terrorism. D, fees collected in this section shall be deposited into the Home Rule Police Equipment Fund instead of the General Fund, and shall be used only for the purposes provided in Section 2. Section 2, the Clerk Treasurer is hereby authorized to create a police equipment non-reverting fund, Fund Number 5509, for the purpose of depositing tow release services, service fees imposed by the City of LaPorte Police Department. The funds received are to be used for SWAT team equipment and other equipment needs of the police department as deemed necessary by the Chief of Police. Section 3, this ordinance shall be in full force and effect upon passage, approval by the mayor, and publication as required by law. End of ordinance.
This is a first ordinance, and this was brought to us by Police Chief Drangmeister, and I want to thank him for coming this evening, as well as Merit, Police Merit President, Michael Kellums. I saw, I believe, nobody is here publicly, but I did see social media, I think Clerk Treasurer shared, there are some people on social media that might be opposed to increasing these fees to violent criminals. But I think Chief Drangmeister, if you could come forward and maybe clarify and talk about this specifically.
Hello, Chief Drangmeister, LaPorte Police. Good afternoon. This is not to be an extra cost to the law-abiding.
Excuse me, Chief, could you pull that up there? Thank you.
This isn't to be an extra cost to law-abiding citizens. This is to deter criminal activity within the city. If you drink and drive, drive without a license, rob somebody, use your vehicle as an accessory, this is when it would apply to you. It's not an added tax, like I seen on the comments on there. Just be a law-abiding citizen, and you will not be affected by that.
But basically, so we're clear, someone that's attempting to commit murder, manslaughter, aggravated assault, drive-by shooting, rape, robbery, gang violence, or terrorism, you're saying if there's a chase or.
If there's a pursuit.
A pursuit.
Yep, if there's a pursuit, or any of what you just mentioned, that applies to that tier of charge.
This is not a novel idea. This is done in other municipalities, correct?
Yes, there's surrounded agencies and townships that do it. Maryville, we adopted this language from Maryville, adjusted the, our fines down a bit in comparison to their $2,500 fine. Ours isn't as high as that. Also, Gary PD does it as well, and I know there's a couple other agencies that I've spoke to, and I'll let them announce their interest when they do.
But again, the only thing we've seen on social media is in opposition. Is there anything other than addressing this with violent offenders?
No, so I did see, there was a comment or a concern about a, if I was involved in an accident, and it's not my fault, why would I have to pay? That doesn't apply under this ordinance. You would not be expected to pay a tow fee for that.
Unless you're running from the police after committing a murder.
Yeah, 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 right.
Chief, there's also some administrative work that goes into all of these, correct?
So there's a little bit of burden and inconsistency with some of our towing agencies and miscommunication. We often put a hold on vehicles for proper registrations, proper insurance, or proper license, things of that nature. An example was, we have a couple examples I can give, but there's miscommunication where a motorcycle was towed not too long ago, and a proper licensed driver was requested before release of hold. It was just a fact of miscommunication, because the dad came by to pick the motorcycle up with his truck. He wasn't going to drive it away, so therefore the, to make sure that the proper licensing was to be there before release was no longer needed. So this would give the, put the burden on the police department to give that tow release fee, and then they take that to the tow yards, who would no longer have to worry about what the hold was placed on the vehicle for.
Questions for Chief? Police Merit President Kellums, anything to add in support, I assume?
One of the executives he outlined was the fact that this is named, that somebody's maybe committed a criminal act, and not that it's a tax for working for anybody else, but it takes a penalty against law.
Questions from council?
It's not a question. When I read through this and we discussed it, I was a little surprised that it wasn't already in place. I just assumed that if you were towed for a criminal act, you would be paying some sort of a fine, so.
Sure.
It was kind of a surprise that it wasn't already, so.
Just be more cognitive of who you loan your vehicle out to, make sure that they're not going to be using it for any ill intent, or that they have a license, or not going to go out on the town and have too much to drink.
Okay, having answered, no other comments, this will now move till Tuesday, September 2nd. Thank you. Introduction of a resolution, oh, I'm sorry, Economic Development Agreement, Beechwood Lakes. Councilman Buchanan.
Your Honor, I make a motion to read an economic development summary, and description of a project.
Motion and second. Discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Councilman Buchanan.
This economic development agreement is made and entered to as of whichever day we enter it, by and among the City of LaPorte, Indiana, the LaPorte Redevelopment Commission, the Redevelopment Commission, and together the city called Parties, and Beechwood Lakes LLC, an Indiana limited liability company, and/or one or more subsidiaries, affiliates, designees, or related entity thereof. Whereas the city parties desire to foster economic development within the city, and whereas the developer has approached the city parties regarding the construction and development of single-family and multifamily project, as more particularly described in Exhibit A attached hereto. Whereas the developer intends to undertake the development on certain parcels of real property located in the city, Exhibit B has the legal description of the property. Whereas the developer has requested certain economic development assistance from the city parties, and whereas the city parties have determined that the completion of this development is the best interests of the citizens of the City of LaPorte, and therefore the city parties desire to take certain steps in order to induce the developer to complete the development. And whereas to stipulate, to stimulate and induce the completion of the development, the city parties have agreed, subject to further proceedings as required by law, to provide the economic development incentives described herein. Description of the project, the project otherwise known as the Residences at Beechwood, is anticipated to be a top golf course community in Indiana, and is anticipated to be a mix of for-sale, single-family homes and rental townhomes phased in over a period of years. The plan includes approximately 122 total units, with approximately 75 single-family homes and approximately 47 townhomes. To accommodate our envisioned layout, the project will have split zoning with a combination of R1D and R2B. Attached is the project zoning plan and current site plan.
Bert Cook, Economic Development.
Good evening again. Council Bert Cook, Executive Director of the LaPorte Economic Advancement Partnership. So I want to start by just making sure we're all on the same page. You don't typically see these agreements in this form as often. This is a redevelopment commission project, but in the, with the goal of being as transparent as possible, we've been presenting these to both the council, the Board of Public Works, and the redevelopment commission, so that everyone stays in the loop on these important projects. And so we intend to go in front of the Board of Public Works tomorrow, and then the redevelopment commission next week. As Councilman Buchanan read, this is the Beechwood Lakes Development Project. It's about a $30 million expected investment, capital investment by the developer, to build 75 single-family homes. Fifteen of those would be executive-level homes along the golf course, 60 single-family homes at the interior of the development, and then 47 townhomes, which is closer to Monroe Street. Ultimately, the developer would pay $1,865,000 for the property. We would escrow those funds. It is the developer's responsibility to put in all of the infrastructure that was going to serve this site. And you've, if you've looked at the agreement, you've seen the site plan, there's a significant amount of infrastructure, and that's roads, water, wastewater, and stormwater infrastructure. So it is the developer's cost to bear. We will allow. So it is the developer's cost to bear. We will allow them to receive payback on that based on the funds that they're putting into the development, the purchase price, as well as a developer-backed bond. And I want to stress, because we talk about this often, that there's some misunderstanding often in the community between a city bond and a developer bond. So this is the developer financing mechanism that they will use to fund the infrastructure in this project. They will have access to $3,955,000 in potential bond repayment. Those are property taxes that they pay, or that they're, the individuals they sell property to pay within this development, and only this development. So you'll have two TIF districts. One's a residential TIF that will govern the single-family homes, and then you'll have a traditional commercial TIF, which will encompass the townhome portion of this development. So as those property taxes are paid, they'll be able to use those funds to service the debt that they have taken on to fund the infrastructure in this area. Again, very little risk to the city. It is the developer who shoulders that risk, and obviously, what they build and the timeline in which they build that will determine how much access to reimbursement they potentially have. Our estimates for infrastructure in this area range from $3 million to $5.5 million in today's dollars. We under, I think we all have a pretty clear understanding of where those numbers are going, and it gets more costly each and every day. Developer would be required to start this project within a year, and we do have good familiarity with the partnership that would ultimately build this. So John Kovcheck, who is working in the, on the Hunter Woods development, and then Redstone Homes, which has done quite a bit of golf course development in Michigan. So they have experience with projects such as this. I, maybe we'll stop there, and if you have questions, try and answer those.
Questions, comments?
This property was for sale before it was donated to the city for several years, and I don't remember the exact dollar amount, but there's, it's gone back and forth. And can you speak to processes that we've gone through prior to coming to this, either failed or what, things that's been tried up to this, and then the, you don't probably have the dollar amounts, but the potential over the next, you know, several decades of property tax that the city will capture from these developments versus if we had just sold the property itself?
Sure, yeah. It's a variety of good questions there, and I'll try and elaborate to the best of my ability. So it was for sale previously, was a gift to the city, which I think was incredibly generous, and really a great opportunity for us to take advantage of. The, we put this out to bid, which is the typical process where we will, Craig Phillips' office, will solicit interested parties who might be interested in bidding on developing a parcel like this. And I won't speak for Craig, but I know firsthand, because I worked with him on it, we reached out to any and everyone who might have interest anywhere near this part of the country. We did only receive one legitimate bid for this, and so people might say, well, how can that be? It's a beautiful property. There's two existing homes on it. All are very true, but what I think people will oftentimes forget about or misunderstand is the cost of building infrastructure in order to serve a development like this. It is substantial, right? And so what's there currently, you know, there's a little, it's not a road, it's a path that serves the homes. All of that will be, will have to be new infrastructure built to the city's standards. And so that's substantial, and that's a major cost that goes into that. So we found maybe less interest than we had hoped for, and that's to say nothing against the bid we got, because we were very happy with that, and John Kovcheck and the work of his team, as we kind of look at different iterations of how something like this might happen. We've been negotiating, Mayor, I would say, we've been at least four months here, pretty hard, trading language and different ways that this project might come together. And that's not taking into account any of the legwork that went into the bid, which was about a year ago that they put together.
But also to Mr. Buchanan's point, when you ask what has been, what's happened up till then, I think you also have to begin with 1986, when not this exact property, but Beechwood property, when the city did not want to move forward, and I've heard from Dr. Kessling on his property until he passed, about his frustration of the city of LaPorte moving forward or denying him to develop housing back to 1986.
Yeah, we, as part of this, you know, I wasn't here then, but reviewing the articles that came out at that time, we're just, what a missed opportunity for the city in that time, and, yeah, pretty disappointing. But, you know, this is a nice opportunity for us to look at in, as of today.
Other comments?
Bert, you said they could start within a year, so seeing the completion is, depends what they sell and how far along they go, right?
Yeah, so they are required to begin within a year. So that, I mean, that's the biggest risk as we look at it. I mean, to be very frank with you, the biggest risk is the opportunity cost of a property sitting unused, right? That they don't do something on the property. Now, we're not out anything, right? Because the only way they receive an incentive is if they build this development. But, but yeah, the plan would be for them to start within the, within a year from now, and then to phase their development. And I don't want to speak for the developer, but they, I know they have a plan to phase this in. You'd want to build some of the infrastructure initially, allows you to build a portion of the development. But it all really has to be built in somewhat the same timeframe, because you can't sell a home that you can't access, or doesn't have a water line or a wastewater line.
Right.
So we would expect them to start with the infrastructure, and that would allow for the first part of the development. And I think as we stand here today, they're considering building it in two phases.
Thanks.
Yeah, there's two homes as well on the site. I mentioned that. Both are beautiful homes, but definitely some deferred maintenance that maybe has occurred there. So I know they're going to start on that, make sure they get those buttoned up and ready for whatever the next phases. And they're going to keep both homes. That was important to the city as part of this process as well.
With that also, you will stick around after if the public has any questions-
Sure.
-that didn't speak during public comment?
Absolutely.
Okay. Go ahead.
Just for the record, we spoke about it earlier, but the question I had when I read about the ability to bond, that's not the city bonding, correct? That would actually be the developer. And I just want to make it clear that we are not taking on any burden of debt for this.
Yeah, I mean, I feel like I say that, but that's great to stress. You know, we talk about that. This is their financing mechanism, but that we allow through the Redevelopment Commission, but you are exactly correct. We are not taking on any risk or any debt associated with this.
And I think the important part of the debt, because you will hear misinformation, and if the Clerk Treasurer, how much property tax debt has been taken on by the city in the past five years?
The only property tax debt that we refunded, the 2012 GO, it's called 2012 GO refunding bond. We saved about $250,000 for the city in interest by refinancing that. It's called refunding, but it's a refinance. So now that is called the 2020 refunding bond. That's the only tax-based debt that we refinanced, is what I'm going to say, in the past five years.
I think Clerk Treasurer would agree that most of the time when people bring that up, they are confusing a redevelopment commission project, economic development project, with some sort of debt the city is taking on, and those are two very different things.
Other comments? I would, if you don't mind, Mr. Phillips, not to put you on the spot, but if you don't mind coming forward and briefly just talking about, because you'll hear about housing and the different types of housing that has come, that we're currently working on, from Advantix to Habitat to everything in between.
Yeah, we're working on various housing projects all across the board, everything from affordable housing, literal, you know, affordable housing as it's defined by HUD and workforce housing, up to luxury housing associated with portions of this development. So, and everything in between, rental, homeownership, all across the spectrum. So we have a lot of, a lot of housing-related projects on the books in various stages of completion, and more to come.
Thank you.
There's probably some comments about the, part of the density and stuff of this project, but as Bert kind of alluded to earlier, the infrastructure costs being over $5 million potentially, or even more when they get through it, there has to be some sort of density or variety of housing to justify it, to have some, the one potential bidder that we had fund it.
Yeah, I mean, Bert will also echo this. I mean, a project, at the end of the day, a project has to pencil out. It has to, you know, work financially. And when you take into account the cost of infrastructure these days, sometimes that requires some increase in density to make that happen. And I think we've been, we've been careful in crafting this agreement in a way that, from a land use standpoint, makes sense, where we step down from business-related zoning to higher-density residential to a lower-density residential to the golf course. So I mean, we've taken that into account, and structured that in a way that we believe makes sense from, you know, from a real estate standpoint, and the impact upon surrounding properties, et cetera. So, yeah.
Further comments? And I know there's one comment online right now about the Coke Building. You know, we can't see that move quick enough. The Housing Opportunity Group and organization has said they're still waiting on state approval. We need that to happen, because when we talk about mental health, and those that have in the past had a situation, but now are on either the right foot mentally or physically, that need a little help and support, Ivy Flats is a great option, 19 apartments with some-
Wraparound services.
Wraparound services for that, thank you. So, we can't see that. If it was up to us, we'd make it happen tomorrow. But unfortunately, housing opportunities is still waiting. Other comments? Hearing none? Do I have a motion? This can pass this evening.
So moved.
Further comments? Discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. Introduction of a resolution to transfer funds.
Your honor, I'd like to introduce a resolution and read it for the first and only time.
Second.
Motion and second. Discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
Councilman Galloway.
Resolution to transfer funds within the 2025 budgets, whereas there are additional monies needed in certain line items in the 2025 budgets in order to pay for essential services and obligations. Now therefore be it, and it is hereby resolved by the common council of the city of LaPorte, Indiana, that the following transfers be made within the following budgets for the year 2025. General Fund Code Enforcement, 110-318, from 315.001 demolition, demolition, to 11 salaries, $14,500. From 361 repairs, maintenance, to 321 commut- I got it, hang on. Communication, transportation, $500. From 361 repairs, maintenance, to 3, already read that one.
That's another one.
361 repairs, maintenance, to 315.001 MSP IT cost, $400. From 365 lease, to 391 other services, $200. Local roads and streets, 2202-524, from 231 operating supplies, to 361 repairs, maintenance, $3,600. From 231 operating supplies, to 290 repairs, maintenance, supplies, $1,550. End of resolution.
Clerk Treasurer, part though?
I added the requests from the department head to your packet, so you could see. I'm happy to answer questions if you have any, but budgets are estimates, so there's transfers along the way, and there have been a lot this year.
Motion to approve?
So moved. Second.
Discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. And by the way, that comment I did not give due credit, it was Chris Wheeler that was asking that. If you don't know Chris, you probably know his coffee, and he is everywhere, every day. So, local, what do you call him, brewer, or a-
Roaster.
Roaster. He does a fantastic job and has been a positive impact, made a positive impact in the community, so. Other than that, please don't forget, if you can get out Friday to the naming of the frog on the mural at Hot Spot at 12? 12 in the afternoon. Please do. And with that, do I have a motion?
Motion to adjourn.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
We are adjourned. Have a great evening, everyone.